And thank you for today's council countdown. I'm Chloe G. And my usual partner Hannah Nichols got pulled into a really quick meeting. So I'm gonna be trying to do this one solo. So we are thrilled to have you tuning in to today's meeting. It's been a couple of weeks since we have had a county council meeting that will be beginning at five. Prior to this one, we had a finance administration and economic development committee that started at three and wrapped up just a few minutes ago. Um, the finance administration economic development committee had a lot of exciting things to discuss, including item ten, that the recommended approval of an ordinance authorizing be for memorial hospital to pledge revenues and connections with the insurance of healthcare revenue bonds. And they also talked about the potential transfer of authority for conducting municipal elections from the town of Port Royal to the county board of voter registration and elections. That's just two of the many different things that were discussed. So some things we have to look forward to for our five o'clock Beaufort County Council meeting. We're gonna start with a report from administrator, Mr. Michael Moore. And he, we're gonna have a proclamation for the lands and Woodland River Festival Day from council member Glover. After that, there is also going to be two presentations about the procurement and purchasing before we head into public hearing and action items. The first three items are all time sensitive, meaning they will be pushed forward directly from our previous committee meeting that we had at three o'clock. Um, then item sixteen is gonna be discussed and it's gonna be discussed by council on possibly providing the report and all supporting documents from Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd to state and county law enforcement. Then we're gonna have a third reading of amendment to the county's traffic impact analysis policy. For that, we also have items nineteen and twenty to provide for A tax and H tax appropriations. Um, item twenty-one is the first reading of the potential rezoning for property on Eustis Landing Road in Ladies Island. And the next item would provide for purchase of real property identified as Cooler Tract B. And the final item that we will see at council tonight will be whenever they head into executive session. And it's gonna be talking about the conveyance of property to be written memorial hospital for the development workforce and affordable housing at three 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 and three three five Buck Walter Parkway. So that was a lot, as you just heard, and that was just a very quick gloss over of all of the things that we are going to be discussing. So make sure you stick around and listen to all of it. There's a lot of important things on the agenda tonight. Have a lot of people filing in here already. We got a full house and already looking for extra seeing, which is a great sign. So we love to have all of our community members out here. And just a reminder that um, if you want to check out any of our agendas, packets or minutes prior to the meeting, it can be found at beaufortcountysc.gov. So we do have just a couple of minutes still, but before we do that, we're gonna make a couple of announcements. So the Beaufort County Accommodations Tax Board has begun accepting state A tax grant applications from organizations in Beaufort County wishing to receive grants from the two percent state accommodations tax fund. All applicants for this must attend at a, at least one workshop. We have one more and that's gonna be Tuesday, September third at five thirty P M. And it's gonna be right here in the county council chambers on one hundred Rebo Road. The application is available online and they will be received through Friday, September thirteenth. Council member Howard, so moving on, council member Howard will host a joint with Richard Geier from the Beaufort County Board of Education this Thursday, August twenty-ninth at five thirty P M. This meeting will be held at the Port Royal Community Center at fifteen fourteen Richmond Avenue. The topics of discussion are, will be population growth, especially along Salem Road and the Paris Island Gateway, traffic safety, including pathways and sidewalks, and any other topics brought up by attendees. Representatives from Beaufort County Engineering will be present to answer any questions. And the Beaufort County Passive Parks Department has an exciting nature program with birding, trail walks and specialty events. So I think I'm gonna go ahead and cut this one early because like I said, there are so many people here and we don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable being on camera. So I'm gonna go ahead and cut this one. About five minutes from now, we will be beginning our scheduled county council meeting. So thank you and we hope you continue to tune in.
If I could have everybody's attention, it is a rather long agenda. There's lots of people who wanna speak to us, lots of things to do. We have a very long executive session. We're gonna try and get through everything as quickly as we can. So would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then please remain standing for the invocation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a prayer. Father God, we are grateful to you for all that you do for us. In spite of ourselves, Lord, you've been good to us and we are grateful for that. We're grateful, Lord, for even for diversity among our people here in Beaufort County. Whether they're white, whether they're black, whether they're Mexicans. Uh, we all are different, Lord, and even though we have the same skin colors, sometimes we also have differences. But God, you told us and you recommended to us that we come together and we reason among ourselves. So I ask, Lord, at this time that as we deliberate, as we talk about, as we discuss, that we do not take anything personal, but we take it for the betterment of Beaufort County. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would like to have a member of council making motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Don't move, sir.
I'll second.
Mr. McCollum made the motion and...
Me, Logan.
I know. Mr. Cunningham made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the agenda is approved without objection and I see no objections. Next is the approval of minutes of May twenty-eighth, June tenth, June twenty-fourth, special meetings of June fourth and June twenty-seventh. A motion, please, for the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Ms. Howard made the motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Tabernick made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection and I see no objection. Um, I get to do a couple of things tonight. The first thing I'm going to do is welcome everybody. It's a nice to see a nice crowd, those of you watching us on TV as well. Uh, the first item I would like to have is the commanding officer for the Marine Corps Air Station. Come forward, please. This is Colonel Mark Bortman from the Marine Corps Air Station.
Good afternoon. Chairman Passment, distinguished members of the Beaufort County Council. Again, good afternoon. Uh, so why am I here? I'm here to celebrate that on the twenty-fifth of July, twenty twenty-four, we closed on the Gregory Neck easement. I think it's time for us to, yes. It's time for us to, uh, to take just a moment to be proud of that accomplishment. Those four thousand four hundred and nine acres located in the heart of the Port Royal Sound were under pressure from that potential development. Those waters that are in that area now lead, or that waters that are in the area that lead into the Broad River will be cut clean forever. A protection of over a thousand acres of salt marsh and thirteen point five miles of riverfront within the Port Royal Sound water set has been protected due to the action taken by this, this distinguished group. It's preserving critical wildlife corridors in the Ace Basin, basin, all the way down to the Savannah River. We are incredibly proud of the air station of eighty-four years of location within Beaufort County and twenty-year partnership with the Beaufort County and the Open Land Trust. Together, we've protected a pecan farm. I'm not from the south. Peacon or pecan? A pecan farm, a battlefield, public parks, rural landscape, family farmlands, open space, and now Gregory Neck. Over eleven thousand acres protected thus far. How'd we get the money? How much did we get the money from the federal government to protect? Six million dollars, uh, from the Department of Defense. We got that from the Navy's readiness, or the Department of the Navy's readiness, environmental protection integration challenge program called the REPI Challenge. I'd like to make a couple of thank yous. First of all, to the Beaufort County and the Beaufort County Council for taking a chance and protecting land, uh, as in Gregory Neck. And two, uh, the Nature Conservancy for actually taking the risk and creating this opportunity. To Beaufort County and the Green Space Program, the project represents the first closing money using the sales tax referendum. And maybe even more importantly, the first time that we can remember that a county took action to protect land that's not within its own borders. So I'd like to applaud you for that. Thank you very much. Remember, our aircraft at the air station do not adhere to county or state boundaries and neither should any conservation efforts or their benefits. Beaufort County government and citizens should be thankful for having the insight to act and address this landscape and the watershed scale benefits protecting this property. To the Conservation Bank of South Carolina, thank you for whom this easement is ranked as one of the highest ever and earned praise from the state joint bank bond review committee. Department of Defense and the REPI program, their investment was the largest in its history and represents twenty-six percent of the entire REPI funds spent right here in South Carolina. We are grateful those dollars will continue to prevent incompatible development and increase coastal resilience. To Jasper County, whose leadership on land use and policies and this conservation ethic afford us the opportunity to work with the landowners in this region. Within the South Carolina Low Country Sentinel Landscape, we, uh, we've encompassed more than two point two million acres, uh, towards this conservation. Let's continue to make sure that that noise you hear is the sound of freedom and the silence you hear is the sound of conservation. Thank you all very much.
Okay, as you will see on the agenda, it says chairman's update. And I'm going to recognize some, some individuals here. Just recently, beginning on Monday, August twenty-ninth, going through the first of, uh, September, we attended the South Carolina Association of Counties Annual Conference. At that conference, we went to classes, learned things, networked, did lots of things. And there were some honors at that conference. And tonight I'm going to recognize the South Carolina Association graduates who graduated from the courses that they had to take at that conference and beforehand. There are two levels. Level one courses for council members and for administrative staff and for county staff. That's twenty-seven hours of work that they had to do. Level two is another eighteen hours. So would the following members please stand up to be recognized? Council member David Bartholomew. Level one graduate. Council member Paula Brown, level one graduate. Council member Tom Reed's, level one graduate. Council member Anna Marie Tabernick, level one graduate. The Assistant County Administrator for Finance, Dale Butts. The Assistant County Administrator for Public Safety, John Robinson. Our level two graduates, the Assistant County Administrator for Finance, Dale Butts. And finally, the Assistant County Administrator for Infrastructure, Gerald, Jared Fralix. This is quite an accomplishment. It takes a lot of time on their part to go to these courses. It makes them better council people, better employees. But that's not all. We have other people within our employ that do great things. In our clerk to council's office, our deputy clerk to council, Brenna Owens, has received the Professional Administrative Certificate of Excellence called ACE from the American Society of Administrative Professionals. From our engineering department, our interim director of engineering, Brian Bauer, has received the Certified Envision Sustainability Professional, professional through the Infrastructure Sustainability Institute. With this certification, the county is also now considered an envisioned supported agency and is eligible to utilize Envision. And if you don't know what that is, you may have heard the term leads. That means you are doing everything you possibly can when you construct your facilities. They're, they're most environmentally sensitive.
He's in the hallway.
He's in the hallway. He's hiding from us. It's Brian Bauer. Thank you. Finally, from our passive parks, our naturalist Destiny Rains is received a certification as an interpretive guide with the National Association of Interpretation. And our passive park ranger Bradley Owens for the certification as Low Country Master Naturalist. Congratulations to all of these people. As you can see, those of you in the room and those of you who are working, watching us on TV, we do a lot of great things and we take time out of our lives to be quality, professional, public servants. So thank you. All right, next, we turn over to our administrator. Mr. Moore, for your report.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Council. Uh, I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge, um, our county first responders and staff for their efforts during Tropical Storm Debbie earlier this month. From sandbag distribution to debris removal, stormwater issues and responses to nine one one calls in Maine, the Emergency Operations Center. County staff worked hard and long hours to support the community. Um, for me, uh, I've been completing my county orientation tours and meetings with many of you all. Uh, last week, council member Howard and I toured her district and last month I visited the Fusky Island with council members McEllen and Lawson. Other visits I've completed include the Veterans Affairs and Voter Registration Elections Department, the Emergency Operations Center, Public Works, Mosquito Control, Alcohol and Drug Abuse and Human Services Department. They're all doing fantastic work, I can tell you. I've also met with the managers of Hilton Head, Beaufort and Bluffton. And last week, uh, the chair and I met with the mayor and town manager of Hilton Head to discuss green space, the Mitchellville acquisition, Windmill Harbor traffic signal, the Highway two seventy-eight project MOU and the St. James Church relocation. Also last week, Chairman Passment, Assistant County Minister Fralix and I participated in transportation referendum roundtable discussion. The focus on educating the electorate on the twenty twenty-four referendum. Um, Jasper County. Uh, municipalities and chambers and realtors participated. Um, I would like now to turn to recognition of some county employees. First up, um, probate court Sylvia Thompson. Over here. Come on up. Come on up. Her position is the Division Chief of Therapeutics, and she's been with the county 19 years. Excellent. Summary of your duties, you manage, maintain, and oversee therapeutic divisions, which is an involuntary commitment of mentally ill and chemically dependent residents. And, uh, something unique about you, um, you're originally from Indiana. You relocated to Beaufort with your husband Randy, former United States Marine. After his retirement, um, they decided to make Beaufort their homes. You have embraced the Low Country life, and you enjoy spending time with, um, your family, your dog, doing yard work, reading, and traveling.
Correct, yes.
So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, next up from Mosquito Control, we have Chuck Crosby. Saw him in the back. Good to see you again, Chuck. I actually got to meet Chuck when I went over to visit, uh, Mosquito Control. His title is Maintenance Engineer, um, and he's been with the county, what, six years?
Yeah, previous 11, four that.
Right, so six years this time. This is second tour of duty here, as we like to say. He's primarily responsible for maintaining all the equipment used in the department. He also fabricates new parts and equipment that can't be found elsewhere. Chuck built the two spray systems currently used on the department's helicopter. Fabricating this system in-house has saved the apartment $110,000. And his unique position is a staple in almost every well-established mosquito-controlled department in the country. Wide range of knowledge has often saved the department time and money. He's designed and built custom piping systems, fabricated custom stainless steel and aluminum parts for department equipment and vehicles, gutted and renovated storage shed to house a dry pelletizer and other surveillance equipment, and built countless other vital, um, components for the department. His superior work ethic and willingness to take on any task have greatly contributed to the current success of the mosquito-controlled department. Something unique, um, as we've already mentioned, he previously worked, um, in the mosquito-controlled department from 1988 to 1999, which gives him a unique perspective and knowledge of how mosquito control operations have changed over the years. He worked as a field supervisor and briefly as a flight engineer on the Super DC-3 aircraft. He's the only person who's flown in every Beaufort County mosquito-controlled aircraft, all in your logbook, I'm sure. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have from the Communications Accountability Department, Chloe Gee. Gee. I stand corrected. Oh, there she is. Uh, her position, title is Social Media Specialist. Hello, Chloe. Uh, she's been with the county one year and three months. Summary of her job duty, uh, Chloe creates consistent and meaningful content on all of the county's social media and digital platforms. She also serves as one of the on-air talents for our county television channel, BCTV. She works hard to implement communication and marketing strategies that support and promote county services and resources to our residents. Something unique, um, you're originally from Ohio. Uh, you moved to the Low Country with your two dogs, Dixie and Remy, in 2023. Uh, you just finished your, uh, master's degree in digital media transformation and innovation. Congratulations for that. And in her free time, she enjoys watching sports, specifically the Bengals and Buckeyes, going to the beach and surfing. In her six, she grew up on a farm and, and used to raise animals to show at the fair. Thank you, Chloe. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just address one thing Mr. Moore said about Debbie? Mr. Moore and Jared Fralix took a trip this past week to Bay Pines. Bay Pines is a community in District 11 that was flooded out, and I want to thank you very much. Those families were elated, and I'm telling you, we appreciate you doing that.
Yep. We were there on Friday. We have a couple presentations, uh, before our citizen comments. Our first presentation is a proclamation for the Lands' End Woodland River Festival Day, and that will be conducted by Councilmember Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is Mr. Coaksen here? Need to put my glasses on. Mr. Chairman, I, um, before I read the proclamation here, um, want to say that the Lands' End Woodland Club in the early 1900s, um, group of citizens got together and purchased over 300 acres of land. And I can't tell you the reason for why they did that. Mr. Coaksen may tell you, but I saw it as a move at that time for energy, because they use wood for energy. And they also had enough land to buy, I mean, to hunt, uh, wildlife games. So it was also food as well as energy. Mr. Coaksen is the Vice Chairman. Okay, Vice President, um, of the Lands' End Woodland Club. And this proclamation says, whereas County Council of Beaufort County recognized the uniqueness of Lands' End Woodland Incorporated, and whereas more than 100 years ago, 47 families organized pool funds and funded Lands' End Woodland Club, now organized as Lands' End Woodland Incorporated, purchased 328 acres of land on St. Helena Island and has worked diligently in maintaining and sustaining this treasure. And whereas Lands' End Woodland River Festival was founded with the intention of honoring its founding families, this celebration also requires, uh, serves to provide economic opportunity or support to the mission of preservation. And whereas festival guests will be served with the history of the organization, the Gullah culture, and the county, Beaufort County Council recognized the importance of the Lands, Lands' End Woodland River Festival and the festivities enjoyed by all of those in attendance. Now therefore be resolved that the Beaufort County Council proclaims Saturday, August 31st, 2024, as Lands' End Woodland River Festival Day, and this is dated on the 26th day, today's date, uh, and is signed by our Chairman, um, Mr. Joseph F. Passman, Jr. Congratulations. If nothing else, invite them to the festival.
Yes. Thank you for this proclamation. Our festival starts on Friday, this, on the 30th, and ends on the 31st on Saturday. And I hope I can see some of y'all faces out there. And thank you again.
Congratulations.
There will be a lot of, um, uh, good seafood out there at the festival. Some good free seafood. Fresh shrimp, local.
Okay, item number nine on our agenda is a presentation of the framework and timeline for the implementing county councils' action items relating to the procurement and purchasing issues. Our special call meeting of county council, July 23rd, 2024. Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening again. As directed in the July 23rd report concerning procurement and purchasing issues, tonight, I am providing a framework, timeline, and update for implementing the action items outlined in the report. We're taking an important step in this process, which is the new procurement code this, um, evening, which council is considering. Several of the recommendations in the report have already been implemented, but a lot of them are going to depend upon passage of the new procurement code. And staff focus of effort, since the issuances of the report, as you can see, a lot of effort's been put into the procurement code. Our work is ongoing in other areas of the report. And A1, take steps to provide for more robust documentation of procurements. The new procurement code, section 2-507, will require the Procurement Services Director to maintain a project file. Staff has created a new project file system, which collates documents by fiscal year, solicitation category, competitive or non-competitive, and type, RFP, RFQ, IFP, et cetera, and a uniform numbering system. All documents for each project is required identified by a specific solicitation, um, type. We'll have a documentation check sheet to ensure all the requirements have been met and be maintained in the file. And the Procurement Services Director will ensure systematic use of this check sheet that all required documentation is present, complete, and accurate prior, prior to project file closeout. Solicitation closeouts are reported to the Finance Committee at least quarterly, and administration will implement measures to ensure that random checks of the folders are conducted. Next, take steps to ensure that all procurements fall within the county's budget authority. Procurement Services staff requires the completion of a budget confirmation form prior to beginning the solicitation project, process. Projects with an unknown cost estimate, which are seeking qualified vendors to establish a fair and reasonable price for projects, are exempt from, um, fully completing this form. There's an existing field and document review system to post budget confirmation forms, fair and reasonable pricing determination, as solicitation summary letters. Staff will continue to refine the, the DRS in this area. In the event a proposed project cost exceeds $1 confirmed by the budget confirmation form, or a cost of good or service cannot be negotiated within the confirmed price, the Procurement Services Director will require the project requister to identify the balance of the funding source and provide a written statement from the Finance Department or other applicable authority of the additional funding source availability or completed budget transfer process. Next, item A3, ensure proper determinations of fair and reasonable pricing. Purchasing Services Director has developed a form letter and required its use for determination of fair and reasonable pricing, which meets the, um, requirements and standards as described. Electronic version of this form is being created by IT and will be a fillable form, including the form section of the Beaufort County SharePoint, easily accessible. This will be implemented by Procurement Services Director and IT in September, 2024. A4 requires properly documented, um, determination of a bidder's responsiveness. The Procurement Services Director will create and establish the use of a form letter to acknowledge a bidder's responsiveness or lack thereof for all types of solicitations included in each in the, um, project file. This letter will include the bids, proposals, or qualifications which are disqualified with specificity. This will also be implemented in September, 2024. A5, provide better checks and balances to guard against erroneous justifications for non-competitive procedures. Uh, the new procurement code, section 2515, provides direction on sole source use and determination. Procurement Services Director will create and establish, uh, the use of a form letter to justify a sole source or non-competitive purchase per the new code. This will be implemented upon, uh, passage of the new code. A6, foster more competition where only one bidder proposes received, ensure more robust negotiation with that bidder. We now have Open Gov, um, software, which includes market research tab called Vendor Analytics. This shows the number of qualified bidders reached, number of bidders who have, uh, vendors who have chosen to follow the project, which download the solicitation and those who submit applications. So documentation, negotiation, analysts for a single bid, consideration of rebidding, and justification to war are all addressed as part of the required fair and reasonable justification. This will also be implemented in September, 2024. A7 requires, uh, fostering more, um, encouragement in small disadvantaged businesses to participate in Beaufort County procurements. The new procurement code, section five, 2, tag 538, addresses disadvantaged businesses. The Procurement Services will work with the Broadcasting and Public Information Division to create educational opportunities which will encourage local, small, and disadvantaged businesses, um, submit requests as vendor in Open Gov, and how to properly complete a submission for county solicitations. This will be completed in November of this year. Implement and require more county staff training. With the forthcoming revision to the procurement code, um, Procurement Services will develop and implement training for the new code and policies, as well as work with, um, Broadcast and Public Information to create educational operate, opportunities for staff to increase their level of knowledge and compliance. This will also be created, uh, completed in November, 2024. The next session addresses P cards. The most recent update to the P card manual is from 2021. So, um, I am directing a new revision to the purchase card manual. That's going to be based on, as we discussed earlier, the, um, in the Finance Committee, uh, what's in the procurement code, and it will address and incorporate the issues identified in the report. That will also include, as we discussed, a policy for the number and assignment of P cards in an effort to reduce the number of users. B2 is enforce requirement that employees include authorization request approval forms of documentation for their P card payment request and receipts to verify actual approved amount. This will also be addressed in the P card policy update. Uh, change the approval process so that subordinates can no longer authorize expenses for superiors and individuals cannot authorize their own expenses. This will also be addressed in the updated P card policy. And then, um, create a travel policy that addresses travel-related expenses. Beaufort County Finance, Legal, HR, and Procurement will collaborate to update our existing travel policy and procedures with consideration of all the recommendations that were presented. That will also be November, 2024. B5 discusses creating a centralized purchasing policy to serve standardization and oversight of purchases, especially IT equipment, office supplies, business cards, work gear, tools, appliances, and marketing materials. This covers a lot of area, and it affects a lot of the department. So, um, Procurement Services actively working to address standardized subscriptions, um, including Amazon and media subscriptions. Items which meets the county asset management threshold will be tracked, and IT-related products, including cell phone cases and additional data storage, are required by existing policy to be made only by the IT department. That's, that's enforcement there by, um, the ACAs and department heads, um, to enforce these driven, business-driven procedures by approving monthly P card expenses, um, and the P card administrator will issue expense violations for misuse of the card. So to get to all these items, we're gonna, um, the executive staff is gonna form a team to create, to address the creation of a centralized purchasing program for the uniforms, office supplies, appliances, and marketing materials. This may take several months to develop a standard, as well as procure a third, um, party capable of providing all the necessary products and services. We, uh, we anticipate that will be completed, um, early to mid next year, probably in the early springtime. All T, and, um, all T, IT-related, um, items, again, as state incurred policy, should only be purchased via the IT department. B6, uh, make better use of state procurement contracts to secure the best pricing available to Beaufort County. Section 2, tag 505 dot 4 dot B, the revised procurement code, will address state contracts. Beaufort County will work to get, uh, take full advantage of these, um, purchasing cooperative, um, through the state, as well as other cooperative purchasing programs, of which Beaufort County maintains membership. I intend to, um, require bioequally updates on progress towards the county goals as established above to bring, um, all these items to a conclusion. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Nick? Yes?
Could I just request that Mr. Moore email us that?
Oh, gosh, yes.
You kind of went through it, and I would like to read it for myself.
Absolutely.
As Mr. Cunningham will say.
We have a presentation of the monthly list of competitive and non-competitive contract awards and matters relating thereto. Robinson.
All right. So, um, earlier this afternoon, I passed out a copy of that report. Someone need another? Anyone, everyone have one?
Yep.
Right, it's a long spreadsheet. So I'm gonna summarize this, uh, I'm gonna summarize for you, um, because this is a long document. During the month of July, Beaufort County, via contract or purchase order or, um, some other executed action, executed 245, um, competitive or non-competitive contract awards. That's a lot of awards for a month. Uh, that's a very busy organization. So this is not typical for every month. July is a special month. July is that month where, um, contract renewals happen. It specifically happens in July as our budget, as council passes our budget in June, it becomes effective of, in July, so a lot of contract renewals happen in July, uh, because there's a clause in most of our contracts that, that require, uh, council's approval of the budget before those items are renewed. So if council doesn't approve a specific contract or, or funding for a specific contract, then those, uh, contracts are unfunded. So you see a lot of that happen. As well as blanket purchase orders. So a blanket purchase order is a purchase order that is created for a specific need. Say this might be a blanket purchase order for car parts from a specific dealer or tractor parts from a specific organization that has, uh, vehicle parts for a specific vehicle or some other services like that. So you'll see quite a bit in that. So like I said, um, for the month of July, from July 1 to July 29, there were 245 of these, of such actions. 20 of those actions were over $200,000, so those were actions that would come forward to, for council's approval if they were unbudgeted, well, not unbudgeted items, but items that would need to come forward for council. There were nine of those that, uh, were, uh, came forward to committee. 23 of those were under $150,000, so that requires the signature of the administrator. 31 of those were under $50,000. Because $50,000 is that, is that kind of, um, number where, um... Because $50,000 is that, is that kind of number where, has been discussed before, this is where, where some of our contracts are awarded based on renewals or, or awarded specifically on a type of contract that we have for a, an on-call list or an already developed list. So I'll talk about that a little bit more specifically. So of those 31 contracts that, or contracts or non-competitive awards, there were under $50,000, but over $35,000. Eleven of those were blanket POs for supplies or budgeted for appropriated funds, and we talked about what, what blanket POs were. Three of those were contract renewals, and 12 were sole source or specific product purchase orders. Most of those specific sole source were software renewals. Software renewal is quite specific to the organization that makes them, so you'll see a lot of that. And you can see the kind of detail as you, as you scroll down. There were 45 purchase orders under $10,000 and 42 under $5,000. Below that is, is under $3,000, and there is no requisition that the county requires for that. That's a typical process that goes through our finance office. So of those 245 actions that the finance office took, I'll talk specifically about a few of those items. I'm not going to outline all 245. We'll be here for a long time. Eight of those contracts, eight new contracts were procured as sole source, and we used state purchasing program. So the state purchasing program is a state, the state of South Carolina has already competed the nature of some of these contracts, so it saves the, the county from having to go back and negotiate these contracts already. They've already been done for us. So it's a competitive, it's competitively bid at the state level. So there's a few of those. Sometimes we'll use the state of Georgia's competitive bid process or the state of North Carolina. So some of those competitive bids, companies that we are members of, we are allowed to use those as well, if that makes sense. Some of the things that also fit into that sole source category are not required, and those are advertising. We did 15 contract renewals and 56 different IT software programs that were renewed. So this list of renewals, and you probably saw them in your, in your budget book, there's a list of software renewals that, that were budgeted by line item that come forward. So like I said, Beaufort County is busy in July. Also, there were 42 non-competitive awards that were under $5,000, and we issued four on-call contracts, as well as six competitive contracts. So the competitive contracts are those that take the procurement services department's majority of their time. This is the solicitation process where they issue that invitation for bid, the request for qualifications or request for proposals. There's a minimum of two weeks of time to advertise those types of solicitations in the newspaper. Normally, we advertise them for 30 days to six weeks. Then those bids come back, they get reviewed, they go to committee, they go through the entire process. So any solicitation process normally takes between two and a half months to three and a half months from beginning to end. So it's a lengthy process to make sure that we have competitively bid projects as they come forward. And like I said, six of those came forward in July. Some of them were competitively bid as far back as last December and November. A few of them began in May, but like I said, this is a lengthy process to get through. It's a big document. There was really not a pleasant way to, to present this big spreadsheet, so I thought I'd print a copy for each of you. There are some generalized descriptions there as well. If you have, most of our council members have access to munis, so if you're interested in getting more detail, I can forward this spreadsheet to you. The items are numbered on the left-hand side, and each one of those has a hyperlink. You click on it, and it'll go directly to our finance software, so you can take a deep dive into any one of these items that is of concern. Or you can just ask me, and I'll fill you in.
Thank you.
Questions?
No.
I don't have any questions.
So I thought I was getting away.
Statement, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Between your presentations and Mr. Moore's, obviously, most people read the papers, so we've had a lot of stuff in the papers lately about what of our findings were, P-cards, what is the county doing, and all the attention that's been getting of asking us that question. I hope that the same attention gets getting this out to the public as well of us tracking what we're doing and the adjustments Mr. Moore is making. So not only can we get that, but if well, we can get that over to the Packet and the Gazette as well, so hopefully they can publish that the next day or two as well. So people with all these questions that have been asking us, they can have those answers. I think that'd be much appreciated.
Certainly. Our, our website has the transparency feature on it, and all of these items can be found right in that same document.
Thank you, sir.
You have to do the work to dig and find them, but they're right there. Takes a little bit of time.
Mr. Chairman, I had a general question.
Yes.
Well, it's, it's just tough.
And I'll, I'll look at it in more in detail, but can we kind of make an assumption that some of these large numbers, like for disposal, class three, municipal solid waste, that's an annual cost? Probably $3 million?
Where is it?
It's on the third page.
Risk management.
Yeah, it's disposal, class three.
Likely, likely an annual contract. We do have.
If we have questions, we can look that up.
Yes, ma'am. We have monthly tipping fees, and there's, there's so many contracts. Like I said, this is 245 for one month.
Right.
So it's very busy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're at our first citizen comments. We have several people who have signed up for items on the agenda, more than the 15 minutes we have, more than the three minutes per person. And there's one person I want to call first to address. He actually needs no introduction, but I am going to introduce our good friend and our Senator, Mr. Tom Davis. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. It's been a busy couple of months, kind of shuttling between town of Hilton Head, Beaufort County, some outstanding issues, and I thought it was a propitious time to kind of give you some, some numbers and some specifics, so you can start factoring them into what decisions you want to make on behalf of council. There are six, and I'll move through them relatively quickly and then answer any questions you all might have. The first is in regard to the Mitchellville property purchase, and you're all familiar with that acreage of land out there by Mitchellville, on Mitchellville Road, on Hilton Head. I think you're all familiar with that. There was a contract of sale that the town of Hilton Head signed to purchase, or actually a bid that they submitted, because it was part of a quiet title action with a partition. The judge then opened up a period of time for bids to be solicited, and Hilton Head had the highest bid at $11.745 million. They submitted that amount in part in reliance upon an appraisal that existed at that time that said it was worth $11.745 million. Council subsequently, I believe, passed a resolution saying that it would support a green space allocation up to the full fair market value of that property. A relative surprise was received when the appraisal came in at $9.85 million. So within the confines or aspects of the resolution that you adopted, $9.875 million would be put toward that purchase, as opposed to the $11.745 million that was in the earlier appraisal, which leaves a delta or shortfall of $1.895 million to come up with in order to close on the purchase. The purchase needs to close by September 2nd in accordance with the terms of the bid, or the opportunity to purchase the property will be lost. I've spoken with members of town council, I've spoken with some members of county council, and I'd like to suggest to you something that I think, based on what I've heard, is acceptable to both sides. I may be wrong in that regard, but that's my impression. What I have in mind, or what I think is an accord, is the closing proceeds, the heirs are paid the full $11.745 million to purchase the land, and then the land is in purd in perpetuity as open space, which I think is critical for that area. To close on that purchase, Beaufort County would come up with the $9.875 million, which was the most recent appraisal that was received, which leaves a balance of $1.895 million that the town of Hilton Head would provide. So as of the day of closing, there would be funds sufficient to pay for the entire $11.75 million. Title would be conveyed to the town of Hilton Head. It would be placed in perpetuity by recorded document and as, as being non-developable. There seems to be some disagreement as to which of the two appraisals is valid. The town of Hilton Head has some concerns about the appraisal that established the lower value at $9.87, $9.85 million. There's obviously not time to reconcile that by the September 2nd deadline, and it's important that we not go beyond that closing deadline. So, so what I think might be acceptable, and what I would like to throw out there for you all to consider, is closing on the basis that I have just outlined, with the county providing $9.85, the town providing $1.895 million, and that there be an agreement at closing between the town and the county, and this is not uncommon when you've got disparate appraisals, is to have a third party come in, a third-party appraiser, look at the two appraisals, and determine whether or not there's any adjustment needed to the $9.875 million appraisal upon which the county is making an appropriation. After that process plays out, if it turns out through the mediation that the appraised value is actually higher than $9.875 million, the idea would be that the town of Hilton Head would be compensated for that adjustment upward. Conversely, if it comes back and stays at $9.875 million, as the most recent appraisal suggests, then the town of Hilton Head is on the hook, and they will pay for and have to finance for itself the remaining $1.875 million with no prospect of reimbursement. So it seems to me that that is a way to deal with this particular situation in an equitable way, and I put that out there for you all to be thinking about and for your consideration. So I, I mean, it's, it's a difficult situation, because I think, in fairness, I think the town of Hilton Head did rely upon that earlier appraisal in thinking that it was going to be covered, but by the same token, an appraised value is an appraised value, okay? So this seems to me to be a way to resolve the matter post-closing between the two parties. So that's the first item of update I wanted to provide you all. The second is in regard to the relocation of the St. James Church and the associated Cherry Hill School, which, as you know, is adjacent or close to the runway of the airport, and it has to move. I mean, for safety purposes, the parishioners, you know, you know, cannot, cannot be there. And this is something that you all are familiar with, because it's been discussed for decades, perhaps, or for a long time. And, and, and in that regard, I think there's also a, a critical path toward a solution, and I wanted to provide some numbers, so you could be thinking about that as well when it comes before you again in the future. Currently, the estimate to relocate, or I'm sorry, to relocate the Cherry Hill School, which is historic, is the first education for freed African-Americans, and it's got tremendous historical significance. The cost of moving that schoolhouse to the new property site, which is known as a five-acre tract of land on Union Cemetery Road, and the cost of building a new sanctuary and a fellowship hall for St. James, the estimate is approximately $7.2 million to $9.2 million. I mean, there's two bids that were solicited. Those are the two bids that came in. If I had to guess, I suspect the number is probably somewhere between those two, those two numbers. But, but that's the starting figure for purposes of the discussion tonight. I have, over the past couple of years, secured $4.7 million in appropriations from the state general fund to be appropriated for the purpose of facilitating this relocation. I've also committed that next year in the appropriation request, that a top priority of mine will be to request an additional $2 million toward that. So you've got $4.7 million in state money in hand. I feel confident in the ability to get an additional $2 million, so that gets you $6.7 million of the way there. If you subtract that $6.7 million from that range of $7.2 million and $9.2 million as to the total cost, it leaves a delta to be hit of between $500,000 or $2.5 million, depending upon where the final estimate comes down. The town of Hilton Head has expressed a willingness, at least informally, and I believe a majority of the members would concur, that they would convey the five-acre site upon which the church is to be relocated with the fellowship hall and the Cherry Hill School. They would convey that five acres to St. James. St. James, in turn, would convey the roughly seven acres upon which the church and the Cherry Hill School is on now to, to Hilton Head. The five-acre tract of land that the town of Hilton Head would be conveying has been appraised at being worth about $1.2 million more than the seven acres that they would be getting from St. James, primarily because the seven acres is proximate to the runway, and it doesn't have as much economic utility. I believe the town of Hilton Head is willing to make that swap, and that that $1.2 million delta between what they own and what they're acquiring would be their contribution toward the project. So I think what I would suggest, that an equitable response from the county in kind would be to match that town of Hilton Head $1.2 million appropriation, perhaps with backend funding, to fund the back leg or the, or the very end of the construction, because we have state funds that could be utilized initially. So it wouldn't be until the backend. To the extent that it came in, the bid came in closer to the $7.2 million, that would mean your contribution would only be $500,000 instead of $1.2 million. Conversely, if it comes in at the higher appraised estimated value, that's a $2.5 million delta, the $1.2 million that I'm suggesting would be equitable from the county would leave us short $1.25 million, upon which I would then go back to the well at the state, or I would continue working with Senator Graham's office, Representative Clyburn's office, both of whom had indicated a willingness to help with this project. Irrespective of whether or not the bid comes in, if it comes in low, and I'm still going to push for the federal appropriation, because I think it's equitable, okay? I think it's, it's, it's something that the FAA is not going to be providing money for, because this is not going through the multi-year NEPA process that you would have to go through. And, and, but I do think there is a strong equitable argument to be made for the proposition that the feds ought to have some money in this. And, and based on my conversations with Senator Graham's office and Clyburn's office, there will be some money. I'm fine with the understanding being that if there are federal funds, they can then be parrotta used to reimburse the town and the county for what they put in. I, I would not seek to have the state repaid. I would seek to have, or I would suggest, and obviously it's your decision, but I would suggest that that money, if we get it, to the extent it wasn't needed to complete the construction, be used to reimburse the town and the county in an equitable way. So that's the second piece I wanted to update you on. The third is in regard to something that your, your fellow colleague, Larry McKellen, did a lot of work on, in regard to election equipment. That's absolutely essential for the November elections. It is projected that the number, the voter turnout in the November 2024 election is going to be about 47% higher than the number that voted in 2022. And, and that in part is because of the tremendous growth that we've had. It's also a result that there have been an increase in 31 precincts in our county, and that the county board has added 27 new polling places for a total of 87 locations. In talking with the members of the election board, and Maria Smalls, the executive director, it is absolutely critical, given those numbers, for an orderly, you know, electoral voting process, that additional equipment, that will probably cost between $600,000 and $700,000. They need 31 ballot scanners, 62 electronic poll books, and 124 ballot marketing, marketing devices. Thanks to Mr. McKellen's work and the delegation writing a letter to the State Election Commission, they have approved that funding. That funding will either go to the board to purchase that equipment, or on the alternative, the state board will purchase that equipment for Beaufort County. But in any event, that equipment will be on hand and available for, for the voting process when it begins in, later this year. So I wanted to update you on that, that particular development. In regard to the 278 MOU, MOA, and I heard Mr. Moore's excellent presentation earlier, I'm very familiar with that memorandum of agreement. It, it recites a lot of things in it that are It, it recites a lot of things in it that are not contradictory to the DOT's plans. They, they do involve tweaking and modifications. And as you go through the engineering process, because right now you're 30% complete with the engineering, as you move through that engineering process, more of these specifics and details will be added to the drawings. And ultimately, those will be the drawings that the DOT uses to bid out the project to a contractor. I know that the town council provided that MOA, I think, late June or early July, after they gave the municipal consent. The only thing I would urge is, and, and I understand from the chairman's report that there's like a 90-day window that you, you plan to, to look at this MOA. I would simply say that the sooner that that MOA can be, you know, finalized, and I realize it's, it's a, it's a complex document, but the sooner that can be signed between the two parties, the easier it is to integrate it into the plans that the DOT is now moving toward more completion from an engineering standpoint. So I, I just, in that regard, I just want to touch upon the degree of, of urgency that I would say is associated with it for, for that reason. I did want to touch on I-95 and, and where things stand for widening the bridge that goes from South Carolina, uh, from Georgia to South Carolina, and of course, vice versa. Widening that bridge to three lanes in each direction and then proceeding up I-95 and widening and repaving in each direction, three lanes to exit eight, has been fully funded, fully permitted. All the environmental wetlands mitigation has been done, engineered. I mean, so it's, it's ready to go. The, the next step is letting that I-95 project out for bid. The complicating factor there, not complicating, but the reality is there that on the demand side of the equation, thanks to the bipartisan infrastructure bill, there is a lot of money on the demand side available for roadway constructions. And the supply of contractors to respond to that demand has yet to expand out to accommodate that demand. So right now, if you want to bid it out, it's, it's a seller, it's a contractor's market. I mean, they can sit back and demand a premium because they've got other projects they can do. So I, I know that Secretary Powell is mindful of that and, and trying to strike that sweet spot between when can we let these RFPs out? When can we get a price that doesn't get artificially squeezed upward because of that supply-demand disconnect? So I wanted to let you know that that was on track. And also have already begun discussions with the rest of delegation members to do the same thing in regard to widening I-95 in each direction, three lanes from exit eight all the way up to the Walterboro exits. So, so that's, that's the next task. I mean, I consider as far as I-95 financing is, I don't want to say done, but as much as that I can do with it. So we're focusing our attention now on moving up that second leg of the I-95, re-widening and repaving further up on the capital improvement projects list the DOT has. And, and I, I feel like we're making substantial progress in that regard. And then the last thing I'll say, Mr. Chairman, and then I'm happy to sit down and answer questions, is, is in regard to the green space proposal. Our green space ordinance that was passed and submitted to the voters and approved, a tremendously far-sighted thing, in my opinion, that Beaufort County voters did. And the county councils to be commended for putting that to the voters. We spent a lot of time, and I say we, I serve on that green space committee with our excellent chairman, Mike McShane, and other, other members, and put a lot of time and effort into developing the criteria by which green space applications are weighed and judged and then passed upon and submitted to you for approval. They are simply recommendations, I want to underscore. You, in the final analysis, Beaufort County Council, are the ultimate deciders on how to allocate that green space money. That's, that's the bottom line. And, and Mr. Chairman, you're aware of this. A lot of municipalities in, in recent months have expressed some consternation about the requirement for a, a matching amount of money being provided by municipalities if they want their applications to be approved by the Green Space Committee. And, and I understand the reasoning behind that, uh, when the Green Space Committee adopted that as a factor to be considered is you want to try to stretch out that 100 million dollars to go as far as you can. But at your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, there is going to be a stakeholders' meeting, I think with the mayors, perhaps with the municipal managers, with Green Space Committee members, I think, ideally, along with Mr. McShane, and, and I'm willing to participate as well, to figure out whether or not any adjustments to that program are required. I mean, sometimes something that looks good in theory or that looks good, you know, in the abstract, when you actually start to apply it to actual acquisitions, some things come up that may require revisiting. I think this recent Mitchellville parcel may be an example of that. So I just wanted to reiterate to council that I stand ready and I believe that you are in the process of coordinating that kind of a meeting. But I want to emphasize, again, ultimately, it's county council's decision because it's county council is the one that's in charge of that 100 million dollars and ultimately the one that's accountable for the money being spent wisely. So with that, by way of, of summary of some of the things that I've been working on, I'm happy to answer any questions or I'm happy to take my seat and listen to the rest of the, of the meeting.
Okay, any questions for Senator Davis?
I just have one, Mr. Davis, thank you. But, uh, Mitchellville, if, let's say we agreed to do that with the town of Hilton Head, to go back to another, another appraisal. Would the same hold true? Because if I remember correctly, Mr. McShane said, "We're not allowed to pay more than market value done by appraisal." What happens if the appraisal goes below that nine-point-some million that's already there? Is Hilton Head going to be on the hook for that other side of that balance as well? Because if you go off for another appraisal based on the, unless I'm misreading it, we're not allowed to go over that appraisal.
That's a good question. And I guess I frankly hadn't contemplated that because you have two appraisals that are 2 million dollars apart. It's, it's difficult, I shouldn't say it's difficult. It's, it's improbable, in my opinion, that it would come below 9.875. But I guess I would suggest this, Councilman Logan. As the county and the town negotiate this, this mediation in regard to two appraisals, that ought to be something that those attorneys consider, that they ought to consider that, you know, that, that might happen. I mean, you can't have a document that's ambiguous as to what happens in that event. I think it's unlikely, but you're right to note that that isn't something that was in my summary and you're right to point that out.
I, I hope we can get it done. I'm with you on it. I think it's something these.
And I don't think it's necessarily another appraisal. I've been a part of these before where you've got two appraised values. It's, it's almost like a mediation context where there's not a new appraisal done, but the two appraisals are looked at, the comps are looked at, the assumptions that are made are looked at. You know, whether or not certain pieces of the property have been deemed undevelopable, that's looked at. So it's, it's more in the nature of a mediation that's fairly expedited and, and, and relatively inexpensive. I mean, I, I mean, obviously, anything is, is going to cost money, but it's not going to cost the amount of a full appraisal.
Any other questions? As always, thank you, Senator Davis.
I appreciate the opportunity to share with you.
Absolutely. Okay, now we're going to get to our citizens. Obviously, we have a number of individuals who want to speak. We only have 15 minutes. It's the chair's prerogative. I'm going to double that. Even though we have a lot to do on our agenda, we're going to get to you as quickly as we can. Please be respectful, state what you want to state, stay within the three minutes so we can get everybody who wants to speak. We're going to begin with Cade Yarborough.
Hi, I'm Cade Yarborough, Chair of the Defuski Island Council. Tonight, we're asking you to cancel the Low Country contract and put it back up for bid. All of our folks have been struggling all year with this old party boat that constantly breaks down. And we're getting word that we're, uh, there's another one on the way. Neither is designed to be a ferry vessel. The bottom line is that Low Country has refused or is unable to meet important contract requirements, including accommodating people with disabilities, safety standards, and a working climate control system. Quite simply, it's a failure of performance. I have handed out a position that makes a case for cancellation of the contract. Over 325 signatures were collected in person and online in four days, which is pretty remarkable for such a small island. Now it's finally time to make a decision to decide whether you will support our community or instead choose the Low Country ferry owner. I've heard that someone should be judged for who they fight for. Tonight, on behalf of the Defuski Island community, we ask for you to fight for us. Thank you.
Freddie Grant, Senator.
Just hand him the mic. Just hand him the mic.
It can't go that far.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Freddie Grant, Jr. I'm a native to the Defuski Island. And I'm here to ask you all to drop that ferry contract called it's not honoring the disability and the handicap for the island people. And as you see, you got me on that photo walking down of, you know, like a football field dock. And I almost fell the other day, like we don't have one incident already. A guy fell off the dock, off, off the boat into the water. I almost fell last week, but I was quickly, quickly glad I held to the handle. So I don't want to take too much of your time. I just want to ask you all to please, you know, drop that ferry contract and put it up for bidding again. That ferry, we, we're not asking for a Cadillac ferry, we're asking for a safe ferry. They get us off and on that ferry and get us off the island and, and back to the, to the mainland. That's all we ask. This ferry here, Low Country Ferry, it's not the one for us. So thank you and thank you for helping me.
Eddie Pennybaker.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Eddie Pennybaker. My wife Julie and I have been full-time Defuski Island residents for the past seven years. I'm the only licensed electrician on the island that lives on the island full-time. And with this occupation, I have met and/or done work in the homes of many of my neighbors. I can say without a doubt that they are some of the most honest, hardworking, and genuine people that I have ever met. It is for them that I am pleading with you for help. I continually read and hear, but we have to abide by a contract. The last time I checked, the word "contract" means an agreement between two parties. I assume that Beaufort County has kept up their part of the deal by paying the prescribed money to the operator. Unlike the operator, who has not kept up their side of the contract as the county has had to issue their own letter of non-compliance. The county seems to be more interested in the success of a business venture that benefits one family at the expense of many islanders' health and well-being. I have to ask, are you so concerned about potential litigation that you choose to ignore our pleas for help? I assume that situations like these are why the county employs a full-time legal team. As you know, the South Carolina Disability Rights Group has also threatened litigation as well if this ferry issue cannot be solved at mediation. When I look at you councilpersons and Mr. Administrator tonight, I really want to believe that in your heart, you know what the right thing to do is. But it will take courage to do it. The same type of courage that Freddie Grant displays every day, fighting excruciating knee pain but continues to work, splitting wood, cooking oyster roasts, and mowing and weed eating at people's homes. The last thing he needs is a challenge to get on a boat. Courage like that of 78-year-old Phil Sams, who had to endure an 89-degree boat cabin last week due to a continually malfunctioning air condition. He had returned from medical appointments as he battled several types of cancer. Courage like that of Ms. Ethel May Wiley, who buried her 84-year-old husband Franklin this past weekend. Eight months ago, in our town hall meeting with Mr. Lawson, she bravely stood up and pleaded in a cracking voice, "All we want is a safe and reliable boat so we can get some groceries and make our doctor's appointments." Mark, that tore my heart right out. Did it affect you in that way as well? In closing, I am hoping you will all find the courage to do the right thing and void this contract and reissue a new RFP. We have been assured that there are several interested parties that are ready to step up and provide the necessary boats and personnel for a new service. Thank you.
Yvonne Wilson.
I'm with Council, can't, uh, County Council. My name's Yvonne Wilson. I've been here before to, to talk to you about many things concerning the Defuski. And now I'm pleading with you as my other, uh, uh, family, family men, family members, asking you to please, please consider our, our needs on the Defuski for a change and, I mean, and, and cancel that boat system. For one thing, like Freddie said, getting on and off that boat is hazardous. You have to buckle your head down in order for you to get on the boat. In order to get off, they got a ramp that, I mean, it slips and go around whenever a boat, small boat passed by. And when you're in the water, traveling in that boat, sometime they have air conditioning, like they say, and sometime they don't. I mean, but we have no choice. We have to ride that boat. That's the only way we can get food to eat. That's the only way we can go to the doctors. I mean, as for me, that's, that's the only way I can get on and off the island, okay? So we need that. We need a boat, a li- reliable boat to be there for us. And I thank you for listening to me and I hope you do the right thing like Eddie said. Thank you.
Pam Cobb. Pam Cobb.
Hi, my name is Pam Cobb. My husband Brian and I have lived on Defuski for a little over eight years. We have a small business on Defuski that has been in operation for almost seven years. The residents of Defuski who ride the current boat, we are not wealthy people at all. We are working people, we are retired people, we are people who live on limited incomes. We are people with disabilities. Some of those disabilities you can see, like Freddie Grant, some of the disabilities you cannot see. But we are extremely dependent on a boat that is safe, that has adequate heating and air. You have a picture of, I think, Phil Sams, who Eddie spoke of. I was on the boat with him that day when he was coming back from treatment. He is in his eighties, he has two types of cancer and early onset dementia. He was hunched over on the boat because it was 89 degrees in there. He is also the same individual that was on the boat, the open air boat in January, when it was one of the coldest days we had, who burned his britches and also his dog's tail got burnt. If y'all think that this is an acceptable boat, please put yourself in our shoes. Put your parents in Phil Sams or Freddie Grant or some of the other people on the island's shoes and think, how is this acceptable for us? Do not think about one family, the Turner family, because I can tell you right now, they do not think about us. We have met with them on numerous occasions and they have done nothing but give us grief. They have videotaped us, they have a gentleman who is currently employed by them who trolls several of us on social media. He is somebody that we're supposed to feel safe with on this boat, that's supposed to take care of us in case then of emergency, but yet he calls us out on social media, not just myself, but several other residents of Defuski. This is unacceptable. Please cancel this contract. Please, again, put yourself in our shoes, put your family members in our shoes. This is not acceptable by any means. Thank you.
Theodore Garcia. Okay, Conway, I cannot read the last name.
I'm here to request under item 13, item 16, that you provide the Haynesworth-Sinkler Boyd Report to law enforcement and that you also redact the personal names in that report and supply it to the community. I think they need to be aware of what the allegations of corruption that have been going on here for many, many years. And so I strongly recommend that you undertake those actions and particularly have law enforcement look at it and redact the personal names. Thank you.
Andy Bellis.
Do you remember swearing this oath? I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, according to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duty of the office to which I have been elected. And I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States, so help me God. Do any of you remember your campaign promises you made to your constituents? For many of you sitting here, I think not. We ask for transparency and an end to corruption. We elected a new treasurer when the previous treasurer, Joy Logan, deposited our taxes into her name, not a county-controlled account, funds which have never been accounted for nor fully investigated. We elected a new auditor when his predecessor harassed the treasurer and county staff, resulting in lawsuits. in lawsuits and moving his office to a different building. What has become of this investigation of misconduct? We now have over five years of allegations of misconduct, malfeasance, misappropriation of funds and services, and sexual harassment. Nothing with county council has changed. Either the behaviors are condoned or swept under the rug, hoping the public will either ignore or grow weary of. I am here to tell you, you are sadly mistaken. We are angry, and we are watching. Three of you are up for reelection to have challengers. What do you do here today will affect your reelection. We stand with Sheriff Tanner, Solicitor Stone, and AG Wilson in demanding you release the full unredacted HSB report to law enforcement, and we demand you release it to the public. You lack grounds to invoke attorney-client privilege when you sign the contract with lawyers. You did so on behalf of taxpayers when you used our dollars to pay for the contract. Therefore, we, in fact, are the clients. There is a conflict of interest within the law firm. They cannot represent county council to investigate county government, on one hand, and county government, on the other hand, to defend the allegations. The financial records must also be released. Under state law, quote, "Institutions' financial or administrative records," unquote, are not exempt from public disclosure. There is no justification to hold them from us. Lastly, Attorney Jay Bender has indicated there's nothing in state law, parliamentary procedure, FOIA, or information handbooks and supplements published by the South Carolina Association of Counties that state a unanimous vote by council is necessary for the release of their report or subsequent records. Each time you make a decision behind those closed doors in executive session, you violate the law. You want a trust, you must earn it. You want the 2024 TST? You've got a long road to haul before that will ever happen.
Thank you.
It starts here with your vote to release the report and all records tonight. Thank you.
Karen Radford. Karen Radford.
I'm here regarding item number 21. The Community Services and Land Use Committee both recommended to deny the zoning amendment on Eustace Landing Road. In the past, numerous neighbors have shown up to both of these meetings to support the neighborhood of Eustace Landing. It is a rural community, and a petition was signed with approximately 27 signatures of people wishing to keep the land as it is. It's a quiet neighborhood with the closest direct business being the service station that offers food as well as gasoline to surrounding neighbors as a convenience. The neighbors that signed the petition were in agreement that we were all concerned over the noise, the extra traffic, and the loss of the beautiful open space that is there to business. Some of this land has been in these families for generations. My father bought the land in the year 1998. He cleared it in the year 2000 and built his home, and he passed away in November. And when my dad passed, all the neighbors came together for memorial, and it was more like a family gathering than it was just a neighborhood. So myself and others would like to see the zoning stay as it is, and I would like to thank everyone that came out and drove and looked at the green space that was there. Thank you to the council people who came out, and thank you to the neighbors who have supported it so far. Thank you.
That will conclude our first citizens' comments. We're now at our liaison and committee reports. Is there any member of council? We'll start with Ms. Howard.
This isn't my committee, but Fort Royal opened their new library.
Yes.
We had an outstanding crowd. I'm taking thunder away from Ms. Tab because she's a liaison there, but we had four council members there, and I can't even estimate how many people were there. I want to thank Amanda Dickman and Mark Sutton, who was the architect, and also Chuck Atkinson for all their hard work on that. Fort Royal Council met the 14th of August, their regular meeting, and then I did attend the Veterans Stand Down. It was for homeless veterans. On the 16th of August, it was excellent. It was at AMVETS, and there were all kinds of state and local and federal agencies there to support homeless veterans. It was quite eye-opening. That's all I have. And the Beaufort Memorial Board meets Wednesday morning. I'll be there at their meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Tavernak.
I'm back, yes. So I have a school board report, which I think people should be interested in. Well, they usually are. It was pushed back from Tropical Storm Debbie. The first thing they did was make a motion to authorize the transfer of an increase in the fiscal year '24 fund balance above $7 million nine, and taking that from the general fund. What's important is the CFO, she noted, that a healthy fund balance, other than being a fun word, helps avoid having, quote, "a tax anticipation note" in October and November when cash balance is the lowest because of the tax collection cycle. And also, a good fund balance impacts credit rating and bond rating, same as it does with council. They have entered into a partnership with the Marine Corps Air Station. Is he still here? No. The Air Station for use of technical expertise of the district source data and other services that will be collaborative and reduce costs all the way around. And what's of most interest is they have a new cellphone policy update. Perhaps you all know that studies show 97% of students use cellphones during the school day. That shouldn't surprise anybody. Teens spend about five hours a day on social media. It's becoming a concern. So at the start of school, a couple weeks ago, the district provided parents with information, and it's on their website, you can read it, that now all personal communication devices must be turned off and stored in their locker, bookbag, et cetera. And they, of course, outlined consequences, but they made a note that it's really been very compliant in these first couple days. Parents support it. Dr. Guaz, who's the president of that school board, served on the State Department of Education Committee on this cellphone provision. It is a proviso at this point, not legislation, and it will become different in January, and there may be changes to the policy. One thing they reported, their CLOCK Committee reported, that's a citizen-led oversight committee, that is going to mirror what we're going to do if the referendum passes. We're going to have a citizen-led committee. And they gave an update on 2023 referendum projects. They do a lot. They have a finance committee, a communication committee, and a project oversight. So they give a report every month. There seems to be an issue at Battery Creek High School with the marching band. They had many, many people speak. Evidently, students that are not in Battery Creek can no longer participate in the marching band. So that was not a popular thought. On August 20th, the State ATAX Committee held a workshop for possible applicants. Everyone on the dais here knows we've been revising that policy. Jonathan Sullivan, who is the chair of our State ATAX Committee, that's accommodations tax, he was great. He covered a lot of information, including the new steps in the process. First of all, anyone that wants to apply must attend either the August 20th or the September 3rd meeting. And he also talked about, what is a tourist? Somebody who lives 50 miles or farther from the event. So when I come to the Water Festival, I'm not a tourist. I'm 23 miles away in Sun City. I don't count for tourist count. When I go to Hilton Head, I'm not a tourist. I spend my money there, but I don't count for tourist count. He discussed revisions to our policy, and the application is now open till September 13th. And he also reiterated, no funds are approved until this body approves them. There was some mix-up last year. And the last thing is, Ms. Howard and I went to the Low Country Council of Governments. It was very interesting when they talked about SE DOT reps and how they're pushing back our bridges for another two years. God knows if any of us will be here, but it was very good information, really. So we attended that meeting as well.
Any others?
If I might?
Yes.
Yeah, this is not a liaison report. This is a report of a citizen's concern. I'm getting calls from some of the citizens from the Burton area who actually tried to come off of Robert Smalls Parkway, making left turn into Robert Smalls School at that traffic light. There's a yellow flashing light that allows them to actually make that left turn if you're coming from Broad River Bridge into Beaufort County, into the city of Beaufort. When you get to the light at Robert Smalls, you make that left to go in there. There's a flashing light that you have to actually take the chances of migrating your way through the incoming traffic or outgoing traffic that's coming out of Beaufort. And it's problematic during the peak hours and when the traffic is really heavy. So the citizens are complaining that there's an accident waiting to happen because the light doesn't stop the traffic for them to make that left turn. It's just a yellow flashing light, and they have to wait for opening to make that left turn to get into the Robert Smalls School. So I would just ask our staff if we would have our transportation engineers look at that light and the situation there to see if we can't do something better to actually allow the traffic to make that left turn into Robert Smalls Schools without, before we have an accident happening out there.
Okay, thank you. Any others? I want to update you on a couple items. Mr. Moore and I, on Thursday, the 22nd, did go to Hilton Head Island to meet with Mayor Perry and Town Manager Mark Orlando. It is the first, we hope, of many meetings with our municipal leaders in order to find out what they need and how we can help them. Hilton Head was very receptive to our meeting. Senator Davis stole most of my thunder because everything that he talked about, we talked about at that meeting. We have agreed, beginning in January, we're going to be meeting on a quarterly basis because we start our budget process early. So we want to make sure that we are in sync with their needs, what the county can provide, how can we have shared services where we can, and foster that relationship. What he did not, Senator Davis did not talk about was, at Windmill Harbor, there is a quote-unquote "temporary" light. As the bridge project develops, that will become a permanent light, and it will become part of the Hilton Head system. They have asked us to turn that light over to them now rather than when the bridge is built. We are amenable to that. They've issued the letter. It's going through the proper process so they can put it into their system. I can't emphasize enough between Councilmember McKellen, our delegation, Senator Davis, to get us the funding for the election equipment we need for this year's election. That was a huge win for Beaufort County. Finally, one of the things as part of the referendum, should it pass, and we hope it does, is that there will be a citizens' oversight committee. Now, it's not our authority to appoint the people now because it hasn't passed. It's part and parcel of what you will vote on. But I am suggesting now that we begin the process of looking for those individuals who may want to be part of this citizens' oversight committee. So as we proceed, we'll find the application process, how we could get it out, who we're looking for, where they should come from, how many we need. So we'll keep you abreast of all of those things that are going on. And that's my final report, and now we're ready for the action items. The first three are time-sensitive that came out of the meeting that we just had. The first one, item number 13, is a first reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace the Beaufort County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 7, Division 4, the Beaufort County Purchasing Ordinance, to establish new policies of centralized purchasing and competitive bidding for the county agencies. May I have such a motion?
So move, sir.
Mr. McKellen.
I'll second.
Mr. Lawson. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a comment, please.
Yes.
I just want to make sure the items we discussed.
Yes, they will be changed. This is the first reading.
Freezing, yes, yes.
Yeah, public hearing, three readings before this goes into effect. Okay, any other comments? This will be approved for first reading without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 14 is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the Beaufort County Memorial Hospital to pledge revenues in conjunction, connection with the issuance of the South Carolina Jobs Economic Development Authority for its healthcare revenue bonds, Series 2024, in the aggregate principal amount not exceeding $120 million, authorizing proper officers to do all the things necessary or advisable. May I have such a motion?
So move.
I'd like to second.
Okay. Mr. Bartholomew made the motion, and Ms. Howard made the second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Saying none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 15, I'm going to ask a member to authorize the county administrator to execute the economic development grant application regarding Project Micro and to submit it to the South Carolina Coordinating Council for Economic Development.
So move.
Okay. Mr. Reitz made the motion. Mr. Dawson made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Saying none, this will be approved without objection. Item number 16 says a discussion of providing Haynesworth-Sinkler-Boyd report and all supporting documents prepared by HSB to the state. I would ask Mr. McKellen to make the motion. Go ahead, make that motion.
I move the county council provide the Haynesworth-Sinkler-Boyd report and all supporting documents prepared by Haynesworth-Sinkler-Boyd to state and county law enforcement, as they have requested for their ongoing investigations.
I'll second that.
Mr. McKellen made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Mr. McKellen, you get to make the statement first.
Okay. My statement this evening complements and is in sync with items nine and 13 on tonight's agenda relating to procurement and purchasing issues. In July of 2023, Solicitor Duffy Stone asked the South Carolina Attorney General to convene a grand jury to investigate potential criminal activity of Beaufort County's then-county administrator, Eric Greenway. At the same time, county council became aware of possible violations by Mr. Greenway of the county's procurement code, policies, regulations, and/or guidelines regarding contracts for goods, services, professional services, purchase orders, and P-card, credit card purchases. County council determined that violations committed by Mr. Greenway warranted termination of his contract of employment. As a result of the allegations and council's own findings, county council contracted with a civil law firm, Haynesworth-Sinkler-Boyd, to audit and provide an initial report regarding the county's handling of contracts for good services, professional services, and purchase orders for compliance with the county's procurement code, policies, regulations, and/or guidelines for the calendar year 2023, and for all P-card and calendar years 2019 through 2023. Council's goal was to determine whether the contracts, purchase orders, and P-card purchases made during this period violated the county's code, policies, rules, and regulations, and to bring the county council's attention, to county council's attention, any suspected violations of county or state law. The law firm determined that there were several instances where the processing of contracts, purchase orders, and P-card purchases during this period were not in complete compliance with the procurement code and county procurement regulations. Council has charged its new administrator with conducting an investigation and reporting his findings to council. That follow-up is now underway. In July 2024, county council issued a report in response to the law firm's findings. It reinforced the county's established procedures. It reinforced the county's established procedures regarding contracts, purchase orders, and P-card purchases, noting checks and balances and required supervisory approvals at appropriate levels. The law firm's report is intended to serve as an internal audit to identify and address procurement issues and to hold accountable those who may have violated county policies. The county administrator has started reviewing the identified problems. Staff interviews will be conducted to determine individual responsibility for any policy violations. Where appropriate, disciplinary actions that are consistent with the county's personnel handbook will be administered. Additionally, there is underway an in-depth review of certain P-card purchases to ensure they were made in compliance with county policies and for appropriate purposes. Since receiving the law firm's report, County Council has been asked by community members, the media, and law enforcement to release it in its entirety. Although the executive staff's investigation is still in progress, Council has determined that it is appropriate to share the report with state and county law enforcement for their own review as part of their own ongoing investigations. If state and county law enforcement determine that there is no evidence of criminal activity and that no criminal investigations will arise from the report's findings, the report will be released pursuant to any proper Freedom of Information request. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bartholomew, you made the second. Any comments?
Uh, actually, can I just see the written motion, if you don't mind?
I was going to ask him to read it.
Yeah. Sorry. So I actually just have a clarification about this. It says, "Release all supporting documents prepared by Haynesworth-Sinkler Boyd." I thought we were going to be releasing supporting documents that were used to facilitate the generation of that report.
That's what we're referring to.
Those have always been available.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Going around the room. Mr. Lawson, any comments?
Um, and obviously, we are, are taking this one step at a time, going to make sure that, that we are not making mistakes, um, listening to advice from, from our attorneys. Um, and I think in due time, everyone will see what's in all these reports. Our biggest thing was wanting Mr. Moore to get here and gets, get, have time to actually look at it because, as we've said before, Mr. Moore is our only employee. Um, the other employees from the county are actually under his direction. So again, this is a, 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 a situation where, you know, he would need to go through and look at those items. Um, and, and so for us moving forward, um, in due time, um, we, everything will be released. Uh, people will see things. Um, and, um, again, there, there's, there's no error that's too low. So again, that's something that we look at this and, and I think everyone will then have an opportunity to see, you know, what went on, what happened. Um, and, um, we, we will again continue to, to, to use this as our steps to, again, to do things correctly.
Mr. Reitz, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased that we're going to release all of our work product relating to this investigation to the people. So I mean, we should have done that.
We're releasing it to the state and county law enforcement, and if they agree that there are no criminal investigations growing from that, then it will be released subject to an appropriate FOIA request.
That's a great start. Let's keep it going.
Mr. Dawson?
Uh, I'm, I support, um, us releasing the report to the law enforcement. We, we should have done that initially when the request was, uh, was made because it gives the parents as if we were hiding something or protecting some people. And I think from the transparency, uh, position, we should have just provided the information upfront. So I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Glover?
Mr. Chairman, I, um, when, when this investigation started, um, the solicitor and the sheriff, um, teamed up together to investigate the, the hearing, I mean, the finding of any violation that was happening. Um, Beaufort County Council then, um, investigated their own in-house, uh, procedure. I've never had any problem releasing it to law enforcement if they ask for it, if they ask for it, so I have no problem. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Tabernak?
I agree with Mr. Dawson, Mr. Glover. I believe we're partners with law enforcement. I've said that a dozen times, my son's in law enforcement, so I really am anxious to release this to them, and they can do whatever investigation they need to do and follow through. Um, as far as the public, as Mr. McKellen said, after law enforcement is finished, then we can release it to the public. But I'm in favor of the motion.
Ms. Howard?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of this motion. I think it should be released to law enforcement for them to do what they do best and investigate. And, uh, after their investigation, we'll see what they recommend, if it can be released under, uh, Freedom of Information Act or not, to the public.
Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, let's touch on a couple of things not even pertain to the report just yet. Um, the media and the public, a lot of people have come out and said, oh, transparency, you ran on transparency, so on, so on, and so on. It is a process. You know, we found out something in the papers before it even came to us when this whole thing started on the Eric Green, Eric Greenway investigation. That was in the papers before we knew about it because law enforcement did not release it to us. And then when the request was happened, saying, is there something we need to know of? We were told not at this time. And that's when we started taking steps. Because us as county council with our one employee, who was the county administrator at that time, Eric Greenway, we weren't given that information. We took the steps as a county to start taking steps to figure out what was going on towards our county administrator, including putting him on a leave at first, a paid leave, which we got a ton of backlash for when that is legally the only option we had at that time. And then we moved on to remove him and put an intern in, and then start an investigation, which is exactly the process you take for transparency. You guys saw a document today that had to do with just the last month of contracts. And people say, oh, county council didn't know about it. Two hundred and forty-five of them just for one month. Think about what goes on on a daily basis. Not everything can be seen by our eyes 24/7. It's physically impossible. That's why you have so many departments and so many people to do that. Unfortunately, we did not have a person in place that was holding people accountable or is misleading those people in those departments, and that was our employee that we removed. We took the steps to hire a firm. They took our information that we had at the county, some of the stuff we never knew from P-cards or transactions that were happening, or things that we approved, whatever it might be for budgets or contracts. And we were very open about that. Those debates happened right up here. Us talking about removing him happened up here. That was public. That's being transparent. Coming forward with the statements that we had at the time, with the information we had, because we did not know if formal criminal activity had been committed, that was the proper steps to take at that time. So here we are, turning it over to the Sheriff's Department and the State Department, which perfectly fine with, a hundred percent. And I wish this is the steps that could have been shared beforehand a year and a half ago when this whole process started. Um, so I have no objections to this. I will just like to say again that our employee is one person, and for Mr. Moore to come in here, and this is his first task, is to take this on, which he's watched over the last couple of months, you know, and I'm sure he went back in meetings to see everything that was going on. That's a big, big task to take, and us giving him the respect to be able to look through this after he became a county employee on July 1st was the proper thing to do. Um, so I stand, moving forward with giving it to them, and if there is no criminal investigation, and I hope that, uh, law enforcement is willing to also keep us up to date on that as well, if there's anything we need to be aware, or at least Mr. Moore, if he has any staff members that he should be aware about that we missed, that then that information can be shared to, towards us as well in the ongoing investigation.
Ms. Brown?
I definitely support this motion. I had people knocking on my door this morning. The, the sheriff lives in my district. I had people knocking on my door, and I had my husband out walking, out for a walk, and people approaching him, telling me to release this. So I'm very, very happy, and I definitely support this motion.
Thank you. Um, actually, we would have done this on August 12th, but we could not have the meeting because of the tropical storm, which delayed the release of this. Um, and before I call the question, is there any?
I would just say, I wanted to clarify that motion so I didn't really get to speak on my, my points, I'm going to keep it brief. Um, I've been advocating for this to be a more transparent process pretty much from the start. I'm glad we're doing what we're doing now, I'm glad we're releasing it to law enforcement. Uh, hopefully, they don't find anything for criminal activity and we can release this information out to the public as quickly as possible. You know, trust is not established by words, it's established by actions, and I think this is a action in the right direction to reestablishing some trust. So thank y'all for going on.
Okay. Do I need to call the roll, or will I be able to get this without objection? I see no objection. The report will be released to law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Item number 17 is the approval of our consent agenda. When you take a look at our consent agenda, it is rather lengthy. There are...
That's what became from mine. I will make that motion.
Nineteen items on the consent agenda.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, prior to that, can I make an amendment to remove item one, uh, so they can be voted on separately? I do have a comp- I need to recuse myself on that particular item.
A second.
Moved and seconded to remove item number one. Is there any discussion?
Uh, move it, uh, 17A, so we don't have to move the agenda, that would be all.
Right.
Recommend.
Okay. Okay. Um, we're back to the main motion. Um, we, we need a duly motioned and seconded for the consent agenda with the removal of item number one.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Mr. Cunningham made the motion, and I heard Ms. Howard as the second duly motioned and seconded and discussion. Seeing no discussion, the consent agenda is approved without objection. Now we will take item number one from the consent agenda. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion, Mr. Glover makes the second. Discussion.
No discussion, but I look forward to the, um, the united way, um, during this feasibility strategy session for this community.
Okay. All right. This will be approved without objection, but Councilmember Cunningham, uh, Councilmember Bartholomew is accusing himself from this vote, okay? And he will fill out the proper paperwork to do that.
Thank you.
Uh, so item number one is approved without objection. All right, we're on to some public hearings now. Item number 18 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to amend the Beaufort County's traffic impact analysis policy. Uh, motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernak?
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown, duly motioned and seconded. Uh, is there any member of the public wishes to make a comment about this particular item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any comments from council?
Mr. Chairman, I actually brought some of these up earlier today with Jared, and, um, there's a little bit of ambiguity in the language here in 6.3.10, and I believe Jared's just going to come back with some recommendations to maybe tighten it up and make it less gray and more, more, uh, objective rather than subjective.
Okay.
You mean at the next, at the next reading?
Yeah, the next reading. No, no changes now, I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, unfortunately, this is the third reading.
This is third.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, Jared, do you?
You can either, you can have a public hearing and then you can postpone the, the third reading, and then you can come back and make the...
I mean, do you think it's going to be an, you know it better than I do, do you think it's going to be an issue with how it's written now?
Um, well, I'm, it'd probably be better for me to bring those and then I advise council what the changes were to address that comment, so...
Yeah, so it would be better to hold the, uh, third reading because if you pass it this way and make changes, now we have three readings and a public hearing to amend an ordinance we passed. Okay. So now, I will ask to amend this third reading to have the third reading postponed till the next meeting.
I'll do that. I'll make that motion.
Ms. Tabernak?
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew. Everybody understands? The public hearing has been done. We're just going to have the third reading at the next county council meeting. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if these are substantial, I would, may have to go back through.
Process. I don't, I don't think it'd be substantial. There was, um, let me see here, Jared, do you remember exactly?
It was 6.3.10.3, I'm talking about the subjectivity. So we, we talked about 50 trips, and then the next item is, in addition to 50 trips, if there's a, a project that the administrator or engineer decides will be added, so just tightening up that subjectivity a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 19 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance providing for the appropriation of the funds for the fiscal year 2024-25 generated by the local aid tax committee. A motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Tabernak?
My favorite topic.
I'll second.
Mr. Glover, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none.
Favorite topic.
This, I'm sorry, we have to go to the public. Is there any member of the public wishes to comment on this? Thank God, no. Okay. We'll close, we'll close it to the public. And now, is there any further discussion? Are we having fun yet? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Item 20 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance providing for the appropriation of funds for the fiscal year 24-25 generated by local hospitality tax.
I can make that motion, too.
Ms. Tabernak?
I'll second.
Mr. Glover, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any member of the public wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any member of council wish to speak? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. This is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to rezone 4.3, 4.73 acres located at 26 Eustace Landing Road from T2 Rural and T22, and T2 Rural Center to T2 Rural Center.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion, please.
Um, yes.
Mr. Glover, second, please.
No, 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 no. Let me read my motion to you at this time.
Well, you're making a motion. You're making this motion, or you want to amend the motion?
I want to, so I got to put a motion on the floor and amend it?
Yes, yes, this is the motion that has to go on the floor. Then if you want to amend that, I will recognize you to amend that.
It's recommended to deny it.
Well, I recommend to deny.
Well, yes. I understand that.
Are you saying that I need to put this motion on there before I have motion to deny?
Yes.
Then I do not want to put the motion on the floor.
Okay. Well, somebody will.
Do you have to? I mean...
I know.
Motion to deny?
Chairman, you make the motion, um, to rezone it, and then it'll be, it'll be a motion to deny it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So I need a motion, I need a second, I need a public hearing, I need a discussion and action.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham made the motion.
The second.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Lawson made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any member of the public wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Now we can have a discussion of this.
Mr. Glover, this is where you come in.
Mr. Chairman, um, I move that we deny the request for rezoning this property for the following reason. Um, it is not consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive, comprehensive code and the process, purp- purpose of the development code, uh, does not address a dep- or demonstrate a community need, um, is not compatible with the existing and proposed use of lands surrounding this land, would adversely affect nearly, I mean, nearby land, and would not result in logical and orderly development patterns.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Duly motioned and seconded for the denial, for the, for the public's edification on here. When we have a rezoning, there is... When we have a rezoning, there is a rezoning request. That request has to satisfy nine elements. Mr. Glover has indicated certain elements that says it does not meet these, and if it does not meet these, we should not grant this rezoning. Okay? So, everybody's clear?
Right. I also like to say that the planning department presented this to the planning commission, and the planning commission denied this back in May or April, can't remember, and it was brought before county council, community service committee in June, and the committee upheld the recommendation coming from the staff and the planning commission. So, we are basically falling in line with previous bodies that made the recommendation.
Okay. Can you state the numbers again?
Um, one, three, five, six, and seven.
One, not consistent with the goals and policies. Three, doesn't address a community need. Five, is not compatible. Six, would adversely affect, and seven, would...
Not.
Would not result in logical and orderly development patterns. Is there any other comments before we take a vote? Seeing none, I think what we need to do is call the roll, please, on this.
Do you wanna hear from the...
No, it's not necessary. We know exactly what's being asked of us. Okay?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, a yes vote is a yes to deny.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabernak?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes.
It is denied. Okay.
Thanks, Rob.
Item number twenty-two is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents to provide funding for the purchase of real property identified as Cooler Track B. A motion, please.
Still moved, sir.
Mr. McKellen?
I'll second it.
Ms. Tabernak? Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved on first reading without objection, and I see no objections. Item number twenty-three is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents to convey real property located at 333 and 335 Buck Walter Parkway for development of workforce and affordable housing and medical facilities and other matters related there. A motion.
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes that motion.
I'd like to second.
Yeah, I'd like to second it.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none.
Oh, I'd just like to make a comment. This is a great partnership.
Yes, it is.
For a great need in that area.
Just for education for everybody else, this is going quickly, 'cause we talked about it in my committee last week, but this property is right there next to... Right across the street from Publix and Kroger. It's next to one of the churches there on Buck Walter. This is something we've been working on for a little over a year now to get this completed, and then hopefully we can move forward with working with the town of Bluffton to get this project on the way. And if you look at the buffer zones of the property, you'll see that it also keeps the wetlands between this property and nearby surrounding neighborhoods as well, 'cause there are two already right there. So, this actually fits right into the type of location and demographics that we would want to be able to put this essentially located between residents and commercial property.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna comment that this is an excellent project, like Ms. Howard said, and it falls right in line with our mission and our goals as far as bringing full workforce housing and affordable housing, and I see this as an example for the rest of the county.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, this will be approved as first reading without objection, and I see no objections. Okay. That now takes us to citizen comments, period number two. We have three people who wish to speak. The first one is Arnold Brown.
That's so we don't have to use our bifocals.
Good evening. Just wanna thank the council once again for the support of nineteen ninety-nine CPO, and it was based upon solid... A solid foundation, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about a solid foundation. All of us probably in this room are here because we had a solid foundation when we were growing up by our parents or someone. If you like making good biblical decisions, you can go to Matthew's Chapter seven, verse twenty-four, the wise builder, Luke Chapter six and verse forty-six. You lay a foundation that's deep. In Hebrews Chapter six, verses nineteen, you wanna make sure it's anchored and fast. The CPO zoning of nineteen ninety-nine is on a solid foundation. The revision... Not revision, but the clarification of the CPO that was passed in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three reinforces the CPO. Beaufort County Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan reinforces the foundation. Beaufort County Planning Department reinforces the CPO. Spot zoning laws reinforces the CPO. South Carolina Governor supports it. South Carolina elected officials statewide and federal elected officials, they support it. Local newspapers editorial editors, they support the CPO. South Carolina Title Number Six, Chapter twenty-nine, dated nineteen ninety-four, it supports it. U.S. Supreme Court, nineteen ninety-seven, Uclis versus Amber Real Estate supports it. South Carolina Supreme Court Case nineteen sixty-three, Bob Jones University against the Greenville... City of Greenville supports it. Charleston, South Carolina Case two thousand ten. Charleston is a historic city. Hotel tried to make some changes, they lost. Support by several conservation groups, petition of over twenty thousand petitioners have signed, and it prevents damage to the natural environment.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. So, the CPO is on solid ground, solid footing, and we ask that your continuous support, not just this year, but next year and the year to come. Thank you.
Carrie Major.
Good afternoon to chairman and council. Thank you for this opportunity. Again, my name is Carrie Major, and I'm here on behalf of the youth and community of St. Helena Island. I just wanna read something to you. Buck Walter Recreation Center, the key features: soccer complex, outdoor skate park, indoor track cardio equipment, indoor batting cages, four indoor basketball courts, two indoor racquetball courts, indoor volleyball weight room. The amenities include indoor concession room, two classrooms, large multipurpose room with mini kitchen, large women and men's restrooms, family restroom, bicycle rack, showers, and lockers. And we look at the Burton Wells Recreation Center. Key features: indoor, two racquetball courts, one basketball gym with locker rooms, one fitness room. Indoor amenities: two large classrooms, one small kitchen, women and men's locker rooms, women and men's restrooms. Key features: outdoor, eight pickleball court complex, three baseball fields, two outdoor batting cages, two soccer fields, one football field, one playground, one extreme ninja course. Outdoor amenities: women and men restrooms, baseball concessions, soccer and football concessions. Now, we go to Gloria Potts Center on St. Helena Island. One metal building, one outdoor basketball court, playground, large open room, small kitchen, women and men's restroom. That's it. Then, we go to the Scott Center. One building, two open rooms, playground, two baseball field, one soccer field, one tennis court, one outdoor basketball court. Then, we go to St. Helena Park, the Wesley Felix Park and Recreation. There's two baseball fields. There's outdoor basketball court, a batting cage, tennis court, playground. The amenities are women and men's restroom. Now, as you listen to me, I pray that you heard the difference in what's what we call south of the broad than what we have over here. Justice, according to Martin Luther King says, "Justice at its best is love, correcting everything that stands against love. The time is always right to do what's right." So, I trust, as according to Councilmember Bartholomew just said, trust is established by action, and I stand with great expectation that you, the council, and others will do what's right for our community and for our youth on St. Helena Island. Build us a state-of-the-art centrally-located youth and community center. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of council and chairman. I come before you today to speak on behalf of our burial grounds in Beaufort County, not just on St. Helena Island, to make you aware of some of the things that's happening over there. We need to honor our loved ones when they're deceased, and we would like to do that. We have people that move to the areas where we live in Beaufort County, not just on St. Helena. I'm concerned, I'm not selfish, for everyone. People are moving in, and they think because they buy a section of that they own the burial grounds where our ancestors are. There are several people who have met on St. Helena with Councilman Glover and Queen Quett and other members of the community to voice this concern. Please work with the people to do something about it. You talk about starting a group where the public can be involved in it, where this is not done. You got people being shot after when you call law enforcement. They tell you to... You have to go to probate court. You don't go to probate court. These people are not related to us. So, please, help us do something about it. I don't think that's a good situation at all. They buy the land they're on, they don't buy our ancestors' burial ground. Thank you for your time.
And George Brown? George Brown?
Hello. Hello. How you doing? I'm just gonna get organized and do something.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, council, and everybody doing? I'm here for the same thing. We talking about the burial ground on St. Helena Island. We have new people move in. This graveyard is over a hundred years old. We have some loved ones get died last month. We could not get to the graveyard now to bury them. Then, it gets moved over there, stop us, just close the road completely. Over a hundred years, we're going to keep the road clean. She gets bought the property about a year and a half ago. We had a meeting with her. She said someone was bringing back dump to the graveyard. So, we tell her we can understand that. She wanted to put a gate up. We said, "Fine, but you put a gate up, just give us a code so we can get to the lot, to the burial ground at any time." She said, "Fine." Now, all of a sudden now, she changed the rule, locked the gate out. Mother's Day, people came here to visit the young one, the family to the cemetery. We could not get there. We speak to Mr. Yoceloff, he know what's going on, and we need someone to help us with this. It takes so long, and that is the law, but I understand that that graveyard should never be closed, and we need to do something about this. You got too many new people move around here, it gets us out. It's pushing us out now. It don't make no sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'm gonna ask a member of council to move and second the following. Pursuant to South Carolina Code Section thirty-four... Thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two, to receive legal advice where the advice relates to pending litigation. Four, opiate litigation and an FAA matter in item twenty-five. Pine Island Property Holdings LLC versus Beaufort County in twenty-six. Walls versus Jim Beckett in Beaufort County in twenty-seven, and Broad Creek Marina litigation in item twenty-eight. Second, is pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two, receive legal advice where the revise... Advice relates to matters covered by the attorney-client privilege for the DeFuski Island ferry contract and for retaining legal counsel. And finally, pursuant to South Carolina Code Section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-one, discussion of employment of persons regulated by a public body. A motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernak? Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Glover? Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will be in executive session at the seven oh nine. County council will have to extend past eight o'clock. I'm not asking for that motion, because we'll be done before eight o'clock.
Good man.
We are in executive session. There will be matters arising out of executive session. I'm not asking for that motion because we'll be done before eight o'clock.
Good man.
We are in executive session. There will be matters arising out of executive session.
Do have one item from executive session that will have a motion on, and I'm going to ask Ms. Howard to read that motion.
Yes, sir. I'd like to move that Beaufort County participate in the recently negotiated Kroger settlement in the opioid litigation, and that we ratify Mr. Moore's signature on the subdivision and release form which was previously submitted by Mr. Moore in order to meet the September 12, 2024 participation deadline.
I'll need a second.
I'll second it.
Duly motioned by Ms. Howard and seconded by Ms. Brown, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the motion will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. The other items that were discussed, we do not have a resolution to them, and two items were not discussed. Items 30 and 31 will be moved to a future county council. There being no further action, this meeting is adjourned at 7:53.
Seeing no discussion, the motion will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. The other items that were discussed, we do not have a resolution to them, and two items were not discussed, items 30 and 31, will be moved to a future county council. There being no further action, this meeting is adjourned at 7:53.